Everyone, I'd like to welcome you all to our Tuesday, April the 22nd, 2025 meeting that Ditten County Commissioners Court. We are glad to have you all in attendance today. And I know that we have several people watching online as usual and also on this day of loss here in our county. I want to thank you all for tuning in and joining us today. At this time, I would like to welcome, I would like to, before we have our invocation, I would like to, from Mr. Mann, and I'm so glad that he's here today, I would like to share some thoughts with y'all. And as, you know, it's a tough morning for so many of us across this county, and I'm glad that we're here together as we continue the county's important business. We're also being mindful of the Mitchell family as well. You know, as part of our Ditten County family, Precinct Three Commissioner Bobby J. Mitchell and her family suffered an unthousandable tragedy yesterday, and one that has struck all of us deeply here locally and across the nation. As we wish only the best for Bobby, who is on her road to recovery, we also deeply mourn the loss of her husband Fred. Bobby has given so much of her time and energy to serve others for the past forty years, beginning with the City of Lewisville Zoning Board of Adjustment in 1985. Since then, she has served as a Lewisville Council member for three years and was the first black Lewisville mayor elected in 1993. She served until 2000 when she stepped down to pursue a seat here on the Ditten County Commissioners Court that same year, a role that she has held ever since. I've been privileged to have known Bobby since the 1970s, when as a child I met her, she was one of my mother's good friends, and they still remain friends to this day. Back then, she worked at GTE where she held numerous management positions until she retired in 1993. She then worked in the Precinct Three Constable Office from 1996 until 2000 when she took office as our Precinct Three Commissioner. And if it wasn't enough, she has served and continues to serve on so many boards that I would be reciting them for a while if I were to name them all. I have known her husband Fred my whole life, and as I often say about political spouses, while he may not have been elected, he may not have been appointed, he too served as well, being that ever supportive political spouse. And only those who have done it know what it is like. Fred supported Bobby every step of the way, and we have him to thank as well for her public service. As vibrant as Bobby is, he was equally just as quiet. Fred loved racing, and some of my personal favorite memories with Fred were at Texas Motor Speedway. He also enjoyed fishing. So as you can imagine, donning suits and going to galas was probably not his favorite thing to do, but he was always so excited to have me come and pick up Bobby and for me to take her on our dates, as he would refer them. Always a gentleman, he would walk her to the door and wave as we drove off. He was always eager to welcome her when I brought her back home. Yesterday, my next-door neighbor was one of the many people who reached out to me to extend his deepest sympathies. He said he had the great privilege of being an usher at their church with Fred for the past decade, and that Fred was such a great and kind man, and I totally agree. Please join me in our entire Ditten County family in lifting up every member of the Mitchell family, all four generations, as they traverse these uncharted waters. On behalf of the Mitchell family, I want to thank everyone across the nation, the state of Texas, and across our county for your outpouring of love and support during this time of loss and recovery. As we look forward to this healing process, we know this is a long journey for the entire Mitchell family. While we thank you for your support, we ask that you continue to honor the Mitchell family's privacy as they navigate this tragedy. Please join me now for a moment of silence in honor of Fred's memory, as we pray for Bobby's complete and speedy recovery, and to support the entire Mitchell family. As Bobby has prayed over so many of us over the years, now it is our time to pray for her. If you'll please stand.
You can be seated. And I'm gonna try to pray here, but I do promise I will not sing my prayer and try to keep up with Bobby Mitchell. Father, it's with heavy hearts that we come down, come to you today with our heads bowed down in grief for Fred. And honestly, our hearts anxious with worry for Bobby. And you tell us in your word not to be anxious for anything, but in everything to bring those things to you in prayer, and we're not very good at that, at not being anxious. But we do come to you in prayer this morning. And it's times like these we truly recognize the sinfulness of our world, our utter lostness without you. Lord, without you, there's just no sense in this fallen world. But Lord, at the dark night of the soul, when we try to see through the cloudy blackness, we can't make out your image in front of us. We see a few stars shining, the bright lights that remain. And so we do take a moment to thank you for Fred Mitchell, one of those bright lights. Thank you that he was a man of God who walked with you. We thank you that on the very day of Fred's death, two thousand years before, you defeated death once and for all, that first Easter morning. Because that tomb was empty, we know that Fred is in your presence receiving the reward that you've promised him. And Lord, we pray for our dear friend Bobby Mitchell as she fights for her life and she struggles with the realities of what has come to happen in her life. We wonder how someone experiencing this level of pain and sorrow can go on. But we know one thing about Bobby is that she's a woman of unwavering faith. And may she say, like your servant Job, who himself experienced tragedy upon tragedy, "I know that my Redeemer lives, and that in the end he will stand upon the earth. And after my skin has been destroyed, yet my flesh, in my flesh, I will see God. I myself will see him with my own eyes, I, and not another, how my heart yearns within me." And so Father, today we ask for our sister, our friend's life. We ask that you heal her wounded body. We ask that you heal her wounded spirit. Holy Spirit, increase her faith in this moment. Spirit, increase her faith in this moment and in the days to come. And Lord, finally, we pray for ourselves. We pray for this court. We pray for wisdom in the days to come. We pray that like Fred and Bobby Mitchell, we would work to be a part of the solution in this sad, sense-sick world. Lord, that we would share your love to the hurting world around us, even though sometimes it hurts us. Father, we don't know what else to say. And so we just close in faith. We close the way you closed your word, your Bible. Amen. Come, Lord Jesus.
Thank you, Jim. All right, at this time, if you'll please stand, we'll have Lauren.
Romero from our Department of Emergency Management is going to lead us in our pledges.
Good morning. If you will, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. We pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now we pledge to the great state of Texas.
Thank you, Jim, and thank you, Lauren. All right, we have no items listed for public input today, so we will proceed forward. I know we have several guests with us today for our resolutions. Let's go to item three A, which is a approval of proclamation recognizing April as National County Government Month and any appropriate action. And we're, we are excited to see April come around each year. I think every month is National County Government Month, but that's okay. We'll, for this purpose, is the official recognition is in April. And so this is a court proclamation recognizing April as National County Government Month, whereas the nation's three thousand and sixty-nine counties, serving more than three hundred and thirty million Americans, provide essential services to create healthy, safe, and vibrant communities. Whereas counties fulfill a vast range of responsibilities and deliver services that touch nearly every aspect of our residents' lives. And whereas counties as intergovernmental partners enact local, state, and federal programs to address the needs of all residents. Whereas Denton County and all counties take pride in our responsibility to protect and enhance the health, well-being, and safety of our residents in efficient and cost-effective ways. And whereas each year since nineteen ninety-one, the National Association of Counties has encouraged counties from across the country to elevate awareness of county responsibilities, programs, and services. And now therefore be it resolved, the Denton County Commissioners Court hereby proclaim April twenty twenty-five as National County Government Month in Denton County, and we call upon all county officials, we have several with us today, good morning, employees, schools, and residents to participate in county government celebration activities. Then in open court, this is the twenty-second day of April twenty twenty-five, upon a motion by the chair, second by Commissioner Edmondson, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. Well, thank you to all of our, and as we talk about county government, I want to thank all of our county employees for being part of our Denton County Work Family. They truly are the fabric and the fiber of our county services, and I just want to thank them for, as I always say, answering the call to public service, and thank you for, for what you do. And many times we see people on their worst days, and I want to thank them for, for the true, what I would say, ministry roles that they get to provide to people throughout their work career. So thank you. We have, next, let's go to three B, which is approval of a proclamation for the twenty twenty-four Excellence in Emergency Management Award. And we have our friends from our Office of Emergency Management. If y'all will come forward. Good morning, Samantha. Good to see you.
All right. Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. First, I just wanted to thank you all for your leadership and support. It's very adamant that you guys truly fund our office with not only our staff and getting the right people in the right place, and then also getting us the resources we need to properly respond, and most of all, showing up and being involved for every event. So we're super thankful for that, and we couldn't do this without you guys. And what I'm going to do is I'm going to read off what was written for us to get the award. But before I do so, I just really want to thank our VOADs in Denton County, our Long-Term Recovery Committee. Without them, this wouldn't have been possible. When the lights and sirens are gone, they stay behind, pick up the pieces, get involved with the community, and really go one-on-one to meet those needs, to make sure that no one's left behind on their worst day that, you know, they possibly had. But I'll go ahead and read what was submitted from Dr. Maribel Martinez, the Emergency Preparedness Director at the North Central Texas Council of Governments. "It is my pleasure to nominate Denton County Office of Emergency Management and Denton County VOAD and Long-Term Recovery Committee, the United Way of Denton County, for this EMAT Excellence in Emergency Management Award. Their coordination and response in the aftermath of two consecutive tornadic, severe weather systems, and their coordination of first responders, volunteers, damage assessments, recovery efforts, in the formation of our Long-Term Recovery Committee, were not only exemplary example of what emergency management should be, but they have been open and willing to teach others of the lessons learned and the best practices to further improve our profession. This makes them a prime candidate for this award. On this day, five tornadoes impacted Denton, Montague, Eastland, Collin, Hunt, and Cook Counties on the night of Saturday of May twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four. Substantial damage occurred, including the destruction of recreational vehicles, homes, motorhomes, downed trees, floating docks, boats, and downed power lines, and more, and halted for several hours on I-35. The county communication center experienced a hundred and thirty-nine percent surge in activity between eleven PM and five AM on May twenty-fifth through the twenty-sixth. Incoming radio traffic from field units increased by eighty-eight percent, and outgoing traffic from the communication center rose by fifty-four. Denton County Office of Emergency Management Team activated the EOC to handle response efforts. They deployed the Mobile Command Unit to assist with response for Cook County and patch communications between the impacted jurisdictions. First responders from Sanger, Flower Mountain, and the city of Denton provided triads and transportation services to those affected in Valley View and across the county line. Denton County sheriffs, deputies, and fire marshals were actively involved checking homes, RV trailer parks, and mobile homes for individuals needing assistance. Denton County Transportation and Engineering crews were also dispatched to clear fallen trees from roadways, and they all came together to handle this response. Again, early on Tuesday, May twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four, an additional storm came in that impacted the county wide, brought sixty-five mile-per-hour winds, heavy rain and hail, and caused more significant damage widespread. The extensive downing of trees and power lines greatly exaggerated the outage of the crisis. Again, Denton County came together to handle the response and continued to coordinate both short-term and long-term recovery efforts. Denton County Office of Emergency Management coordinated with FEMA, TIDM, and Denton County Volunteer Organizations active in disasters to establish a disaster resource center, small business administration center, and a multi-agency resource center, a one-stop shop for those impacted. The goal was to combine everything for centrally to support impacted individuals to have a seamless transition for immediate response to long-term recovery. A total of two hundred and ninety-five damage reports were submitted to TIDM as the state of assistance tool. Denton County Long-Term Recovery Committee followed up with case management operations for those impacted most severely. The Denton County Long-Term Recovery Committee consisted of, served Denton, United Way Denton County, Rotary International District, Fifty-seven Ninety, Disaster Aid USA, and Giving Grace in legal aid. We have chaplains as well, from international chaplains, and their all resources were pooled from various organizations to address the needs of impacted community. United Way Denton County raised over sixty thousand dollars from one hundred and eighty-one donors through monetary donations, and every bit of that was given out. Giving Grace led case management for several residents, which embedded the community to clearly understand and address the needs. Additionally, the committee partnered with Frenchie's Lawn and Tree Service to remove debris from homes in Sanger where accumulation had became a fire hazard. They also committed up to fifty thousand of those tornado relief funds to households in Denton Counties who were, homes were destroyed and identified by that ISTAT tool. It was truly a team effort, and vigorous, various organizations and departments came together to help those in need. And we helped got that award from sharing what we learned from that experience. Our VOAD and Long-Term Recovery Committee have been given presentations and kind of showing what went well and what didn't go well, and that's been being spread across North Texas and Texas. So with that, I would like to call up, you know, our folks to join me today in accepting this, this proclamation.
Thank you for providing some of that background. I would like to welcome everybody up. It is very much a team effort. I had the privilege of attending the state awards ceremony with members of our team, and so proud, always so proud of our emergency management department and the rich legacy they have here in the county. I want to thank Jody for his many years in that department, working to build and establish that. And it does, it is truly a team effort. I want to read this proclamation here. This is our court proclamation for acknowledging the twenty twenty-four Excellence in Emergency Management Award, whereas the Denton County Office of Emergency Management, in partnership with Denton County VOAD, the Denton County Long-Term Recovery Committee, the United Way of Denton County, have, has been awarded the twenty twenty-four Excellence Emergency Management Award by the Emergency Management Association of Texas. And whereas these organizations demonstrated outstanding coordination and response following two severe weather events in May of twenty twenty-four, including a tornado outbreak on May the twenty-fifth that affected multiple counties and caused widespread damage, and a second storm on May the twenty-eighth that brought hurricane-force winds, hail, and extended power outages across Denton County. And whereas Denton County activated its Emergency Operations Center, deployed resources across jurisdictions, and supported neighboring counties while coordinating with first responders, volunteers, and local departments to ensure efficient response and recovery. Whereas the team successfully established a disaster resource center, small business administration center, and multi-agency resource center to provide vital aid and services to affected residents, collecting two hundred and ninety-five damage assessments and connecting individuals with recovery resources. Whereas the Denton County Long-Term Recovery Committee, along with community partners, provided case management, debris removal, and financial support, including over sixty-seven thousand in donations and fifty thousand in direct aid to impacted households. Whereas since the disaster, Denton County leaders have continued to share their best practices and lessons learned with emergency management professionals across the region to strengthen preparedness and response efforts. Now therefore be it resolved, the Denton County Commissioners Court hereby congratulates and recognizes the Denton County Office of Emergency Management, all first responders, Denton County VOA, the LTRC, and United Way of Denton County for their exceptional leadership in collaboration for receiving the twenty twenty-four EMAT Excellence in Emergency Management Award. Done in open court, this is the twenty-second day of April twenty twenty-five, upon a motion by the chair, second by Commissioner Edmondson. I want to say thank you to everyone that was involved in this, and congratulations. I think this, this award is really just an outsider's viewpoint and a report card of what I've known all along, which is the great work that y'all do and the exceptional work. And I'm going to, I think it's worth noting that not only did y'all serve the residents here in Denton County, but you served our fellow Texans across the county line. I think that is so important that y'all, I reached out to Judge Roan in Cook County and said, Judge, we are here to help. That disaster hit on the county line, and we weren't about to let a county line stand in the way of doing the right thing. And so I appreciate everybody looking to help our fellow Texans and our neighbors cross the county line, and he was so appreciative. He's not with us here today in person, but if he was, I know he would, he would say absolutely, and kudos to this great team for what y'all did. The governor of Texas as well has been impressed with the response of Denton County on this, and has personally told me that about the great work that y'all have done. And so, and I know the governor was here on site, seeing firsthand the great work that y'all did. So I want to, I want to commend y'all. I want to thank Jody and Eric as well for stepping in and helping during that, and just our sheriff's office, everyone that played a part in responding to that. But this truly was textbook case of y'all doing the right thing in the right way with all the right partners. So thank y'all very much. So we have a motion, a second. Is there any other comments? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Let's come right down here. All right. Let's go to item four A. This is a public hearing for Tuesday, April the twenty-second, twenty twenty-five, to consider, approve, and/or take appropriate action for a special-use permit request in the Lake Ray Roberts Planning and Zoning District. This is LL, LRR one-two-two four zero 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 four. Property R five nine nine one three is located in abstract zero seven nine two, Jay Morton Survey, tract ninety-four. This is two acres, located in Commissioner Precinct One. We have a motion to open the public hearing.
Move to open.
We have a motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. We are in a public hearing. Is there anyone in attendance wishing to speak in favor of or opposed to the SUP request there in the Lake Ray Roberts Plan and the Zoning District? Is there anyone in attendance wishing to speak in favor of or opposed to? Hearing under of a motion to close the public hearing.
Move to close.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. We have a motion for approval.
Judge, I'd like to ask Stephen to come up real quick, please. Morning, sir. Thank you, sir. Is this the one over off Chisholm?
This is not. No. The zoning change off Chisholm is not, no.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure before, but I do move to approve this.
We have a motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next, did you, did you have another question?
No, we've got a few more, so.
Okay. Let's go to item four B. This is the public hearing for Tuesday, April twenty-second, twenty twenty-five, to consider the approval or denial of a zoning change request in the Lake Ray Roberts Plan in the Zoning District. This is LRR one-two-two four zero 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 five. These are properties R five eight eight six seven and five eight seven seven six are located in abstract one-two-three-eight WA Thompson Survey. This is tracts nine and ten. This is sixteen point one eight acres. We have a motion to open the public hearing.
Move to open.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. We are in a public hearing. Is there anyone in attendance wishing to speak in favor of or opposed to the zoning change request? All right, hearing none. Do we have a motion to close the public hearing? Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, motion closed. Motion passes unanimously. Go ahead, please, sir.
This one, I would like to give a little more background on this, please, if you don't mind.
Sure. So it's currently zoned ag, like most undeveloped land in Lake Ray Roberts is. So the applicant came to us and requested an R-three zoning for this particular property. The intended land use calls for R-four, R-five, which is four and five acre estate lots. PNZ heard the case. They recommended unanimously to deny the request. And so that's where we're at today.
Okay. I appreciate that, sir. I move to deny- Okay. I appreciate that, sir. I move to deny zone requests, change request at this moment.
We have a motion for denial. We have a second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. The SUP zoning change request is denied. Okay. Let's go to four C. We have a public hearing set for Tuesday, April the twenty-second, twenty twenty-five to consider, approve, or take appropriate actions for a variance request in the Lake Ray Roberts Plan and the Zoning District. This is LRR one-two-two-four-zero-zero-six. This is property R one-four-six-two-four-one. Is located in Lake Ray Roberts Edition Block One, Lot Thirteen. This is one point one-three-eight acres. It's located in Commissioner Precinct One. We have a motion to open the public hearing.
Move to open.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We are in a public hearing. Is there anyone in attendance wishing to speak in favor of or opposed to the variance request? Is there anyone in attendance wishing to speak in favor of or opposed to the variance request? Hearing none. Do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
Move to close.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Next, let's go to item four D, which is a public hearing for April twenty-second, twenty twenty-five to consider, approve, or take appropriate action for a zoning change request in Lake Ray Roberts Plan and the Zoning District. This is LRR zero-two-two-five-zero-zero-zero-one. This is properties R six-zero-zero-three, R one-six-five-zero-five-five, R five-two-four-one-seven-one, and R one-zero-five-five-nine-one-six are located in Commissioner Precinct One. We have a motion to open the public hearing.
Move to open.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We are in a public hearing. Is there anyone in attendance wishing to speak in favor of or opposed to the zoning change request in the Lake Ray Roberts Plan and the Zoning District? Is there anyone in attendance? Yes, sir. Please, please come forward and state your name and address for the record. Good morning. Glad to have you.
Good morning, Judge. Commissioners, thank you for having me here.
I will let you know that any testimony before the court is limited to three minutes, so go ahead.
Yes, sir. Jose Carillo and I'm here in favor of this agenda item. We are trying to request the rezoning for R two from Ag. It appears to meet the surrounding land use in the area. Just adjacent to us is R two, and so I'm available for any other questions that you guys may have.
Okay. And is this the property of a chism?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So a couple of things. I do want to thank yourself and obviously the neighbors that came and had a great discussion recently. I think that's how we were able to accomplish the things that are necessary. And the neighbors had some good questions, good concerns, but I think we were able to address all those. And so I appreciate that.
Yes, I appreciate you guys being available for that as well.
Absolutely, absolutely.
What is this zoning change request going to be to?
It's two, it's two acres.
Okay. All right. Is there any other, did you have any other comments?
Uh, no, sir, unless there's more questions.
Thank you for being here.
Appreciate you being here, sir.
Thank you, guys.
I have a motion to close the public hearing.
Move to close.
Motion to close by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Do we have a motion?
I have a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve the zoning change request by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Judge, two seconds. I apologize. I also wanted to note that the developer was at that meeting as well, which is very unusual, but extremely appreciated because he was able to address questions and concerns as well. And again, I really appreciated the open discussion that we had with the neighbors, the developer. It was, it was very constructive. So thank you again for that.
Perfect. Good. Thank you. Thank you. I like it when people are involved in the process.
Yes, sir.
It all works it out. Next, let's go to item four E. This is a public hearing set for April the twenty-second, twenty twenty-five to consider and/or take appropriate action on the proposed creation of Maverick Farms Water Control and Improvement District Number One in any appropriate action. Do we have a motion to open a public hearing?
Move to open.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We are in a public hearing. Is there anyone in attendance wishing to speak in favor of or opposed to the proposed creation of the Maverick Farms Water Control Improvement District Number One? Anyone in attendance wishing to speak in favor of or opposed to the creation of Maverick Farms Water Control and Improvement District Number One? Hearing none. Do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
Close.
Motion by Commissioner Williams.
Judge, I can speak to this briefly.
Yes, please. Go right ahead, sir.
So this is the first time.
We'll go ahead and get a second by Commissioner Edmondson. We'll hang on, John, and we'll, we'll put that on. All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Go ahead, John. I'd love to hear from you.
So this is the, this is the first time that the Commissioners Court has considered creation of a water control and improvement district. So this has been on desks of the DA's office for some period of time. And we've worked with the county judge's office and also the attorneys that are representing the developers. So this didn't take longer than, than it probably will in the future, hopefully, because we had to figure out what was going on and.
All the nuances.
So anyway, the, the thing I would like for the court to know is that it's unusual for counties to create water control and improvement districts. And the reason for that is because in order to get stormwater and wastewater facilities, those have, that authority has to be granted by the, by the Texas Commission on Environmental Quality. However, the attorneys have told us that this will only be to obtain water for the development property and that in the future, if they decide to create wastewater, stormwater facilities for the development, that they will go through Texas Commission on Environmental Quality to do that because that's the only way that you can get those facilities. The court can't grant that authority by approving the district. So, so my understanding is they're asking that you approve the, approve the district in their petition as submitted. And this is, my understanding is it's approximately three hundred and fifty-four acres and a little over fifteen hundred lots within the development of different sizes, forty, fifty, sixty-foot lots. And they have been working with the planning department, Denton County Planning Department on this as well. So I just wanted to give that background because this is, this is, this has gone on for quite a while. And so we finally have reached the finish line.
Well, I think it's going to be a good project. I appreciate all your efforts on that. The chair move for approval.
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner Williams. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. I want to thank everybody involved.
And Judge, again, I just want to thank the developers that were involved and their, the individual companies they contract as well. And we've had good discussions about making sure there's plenty of open space as well in this project. So something that we strive to make sure we have these large projects, that there's plenty of open space. And if necessary, room for our fire department if necessary and/or school. So thank you for that again.
Perfect. Good. Thank you. All right. Let's next proceed to item five A, which is approval of the bill report payments from CSOD Community Corrections, TAIP Sheriff's Training, Sheriff's Forfeiture, VIT Interest and DA Forfeiture Funds are presented for recording purposes only. Mr. May, good morning, sir.
Good morning, Judge. I have no changes today. Recommend approval as presented.
All right. Do we have a motion, the same?
Move through.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item five B. Discussion and consideration of all matters incident related to the issuance and sale of Denton County, Texas Permanent Improvement and Refunding Bonds. This is the Series Twenty Twenty-five, include adoption of an order authorizing the issuance of such bonds, establishing parameters for the sale and issuance of such bonds, and delegating certain matters to an authorized official of the county. The chair will move for approval.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Williams. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item five C. Discussion and consideration of all matters incident related to the providing for the defeats of the Denton County, Texas Permanent Improvement Refunding Bonds taxable Series Twenty Twenty-A, include adoption of a resolution pertaining there, there too. I would like for John Martin to come forward and he could discuss this matter. I think this is good news for us to hear.
Judge, I wanted to point out on this one that we had a budget of ten million, eight hundred and twenty-two thousand to pay down debt, plus we had excess reserves in our debt service fund this year. So some of that will be also included.
Perfect. Good. Thank you, sir. Good morning, John.
Good morning, Judge. Commissioners, thanks for having me here this morning. We also have my partner and son, Michael Martin and Bob Dransfield from Norton Road, Fulbright, if there are any other questions that I cannot answer. The, this item here is, kind of pairs in with the issuance of the public improvement bonds. There were photo authorized bonds, as you'll know, for county roads and agreements. You all have various municipalities throughout the county. So as what Auditor May had indicated, with surplus funds that we're going to give back to the taxpayers is what this really does. So we're trying, we tried to find the most economical way and what provides the most savings to the taxpayers. And it actually is better rather than paying off debt that is callable, like the two thousand and sixteen bonds that we're paying four percent on, which is, you know, not bad, but we could, we could pay those down and be out of that debt. Or we can take the twenty twenty-A bonds that were issued, you all may recall as refunding taxable bonds back in COVID when interest rates were just crazy, crazy low, even taxable interest rates. So because they're taxable bonds, we can set up an escrow and earn, an arbitrage, earn positive in the escrow. So what we've got here is the opportunity to, to redeem or really provide payment for defeats with an escrow. These twenty twenty-eight bonds that we're paying one percent to one and a half percent with an escrow that's going to provide four percent. So we're going to make that much more money in the escrow and pay down that debt quicker and get that off the books. And we've, we've kind of, we'll get a better number here from Jeff as we get closer. But using the twelve, using twelve million dollars, the savings would bring about thirteen and a half million dollars. So net one and a half million dollars savings. And that would provide a reduction in overall, over to the far right in terms of your INS tax rate calculation will reduce in the neighborhood from anywhere from three million to five million dollars a year in debt over the next five years. So.
Perfect. John, thank you. And I'm glad that we have been meeting about this. And I think this is a good, part of being a good stewards of the public purse. And I want to thank y'all for y'all's great financial advice over the years and good to see you, Michael and Bob as well back there. So is there any other comments? The chair will move for approval.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Williams. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. I think good financial stewardship like this is why we have our great bond ratings for taking appropriate action like this. So thank y'all, guys, for being here and your long, long and steady advice to the county. Yes, Commissioner.
I think I remember that we are one of only a few of the two hundred and fifty-four counties in Texas that actually have a triple A bond rating. Is that correct?
That, that is correct, Commissioner Edmondson. I will, I'm going to get you an exact number of how many counties have a triple A rating.
It is a handful.
I do think that's. Yeah. I looked at that last year and there was seven when I looked at it.
I think there's six now.
A handful and a half.
Yeah.
Yeah. So.
Well, I'm so glad we're there. Thank you so much for your advice, which keeps us there. This is good for the taxpayers.
Good. Thank you.
Good fiscal stewards. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. All right. Let's, let's next proceed to item six A. Approval of specification authority advertise RFP two-five-two-eight-six-two, CMAR Civil Courts Building Remodel in any appropriate action.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item six B. Approval to contract with Air Conditioning Innovative Solutions Incorporated for HVAC replacement at the Denton County Jail in the CID building in the amount of one hundred and fifty-one thousand, five hundred and sixty-seven dollars and twenty-three cents for the Texas Interlocal Purchasing System TIPS Cooperative Contract two-four-zero-one-zero-four-zero-one in any appropriate action. A motion by Commissioner Edmondson, second by Commissioner Williams. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next item seven A. Report from miscellaneous equipment and software services is presented for recording purposes only. Thank you very much. Let's go to item seven B. Approval of budget memory request one-zero-zero-eight-nine-zero for the county jail to transfer six hundred and ten thousand from nondepartmental unappropriated contingency to four, with four hundred and three thousand to overtime cash option outside of the budget amendment in human resources policy as recommended by the budget office and two hundred and seven thousand to out-of-county prisoner expense. Funds are needed to, for a shortage of detention officers and to cover the cost of inmates housed at the Cook and Johnson County jails in any appropriate action.
I'll move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion?
I do have some discussion.
Yes, sir.
Um, I do want to say that the sheriff did send an email, kind of giving us a little explanation on a couple of things and that he feels confident that his numbers are going to start decreasing and our out-of-county will decrease considerably as well. And the one thing I do want to ask is our, for, and it's not, Sheriff, you're welcome to come up, but it's really for, I just would like to get the percentages of, of how, where we are from the standpoint of staffing with the DO's office. So if we can, you know, sheriff sends us something.
We're fifty-nine percent.
Fifty-nine percent. Okay. So we're right close to the sixty that we need to be at.
Right.
Uh, to hopefully take care of the majority of this overtime.
Commissioner, I'll tell you, we, you know, we have, we've implemented a new scheduling and we, we've lowered that overtime by about a thousand hours of pay period. And that will continue to decrease. The, the bill for the out-of-county, I sent you guys an email on this and I know, but. Yeah. The, the bill for the out-of-county, that's a February bill. Where we've since, we've pulled all our inmates from Johnson County. We have a total of twenty-six in Cook County. We're going to start bringing those back probably in the next couple of weeks, a little at a time. One of the reasons I can't bring them all back at the same time is because here, I think in mid-May, there's going to be renovations being done to the Lewisville City Jail and the Denton City Jail at the same time. And we're going to have to start taking their inmates directly for a little while till, I think there's painting or something going on. So we don't, we want to make sure we have the beds available when they bring those directly to us. But we, we're definitely trending in the right direction. We have a lot of folks in, in the portal, in the hiring process and various stages. And I do, I anticipate in the next few weeks, we won't have any more inmates being held outside the county. And that the new scheduling that we've implemented, because we do have enough people, that that overtime will continue to drop significantly.
Great. Thank you, Sheriff. Please say.
Sheriff, I'd like to compliment you on, on the work you've been doing to think outside the box for how we can solve this problem instead of just sitting back and saying, everybody needs help and I, there's nothing I can do.
And I give full credit to my jail staff and Tim Rich and his captains for, you know, told them, said, we have to solve this and we have to get it done. And they've, they've begged, borrowed, and steal, stolen to make sure we can get this new scheduling done where we're dropping off a lot of that overtime. So full credit goes to them. So I appreciate that, Commissioner.
Well, we thank you. And then.
Thanks, sir.
All right. We have, we do have a motion and a second. Did we vote on that one yet? No, we did not, right? And I think we did. All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item seven C. Approval of budget memory request one-zero-zero-nine-zero-zero for the Technology Services Department to transfer one hundred and nine thousand, nine hundred and six dollars from Countywide Technology, Technology Software Services to, to Technology Services Public Safety and Courts. Technology Software Services to provide funding for a previously approved change order for the Mark Forty-three Project, which was not included in the fiscal year twenty twenty-five budget in any appropriate action. We have a motion, we have a motion for approval by Commissioner Edmondson.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Williams. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. All right. Next is item seventy. Approval of budget memory request one-zero-zero-nine-one-zero to allocate a hundred and forty thousand from DA Chapter Fifty-nine fund balance into the forfeiture budget criminal DA nonprofit support in any appropriate action. We have a motion for approval.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item seventy. Approval of budget memory request one-zero-zero-nine-three-zero for the sheriff's officer to transfer a total of forty-three thousand, three hundred and forty-five dollars from nondepartmental unappropriated contingency to overtime cash option within the Justice Management Division Sheriff's Mental Health Unit, Sheriff's Operations, and the Sheriff's Communication Division to cover a shortage in the overtime cash option. Line item. Do we have a motion for approval? Motion by Commissioner Edmondson, second by Commissioner Williams. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next, let's go to item eight A. This is a report from Human Resources. Next, let's go to item eight A, this is a report from Human Resources regarding hiring actions of elected officials. This is presented for recording purposes only. Mr. Hernandez?
Judge, Commissioners, good morning. We have one promotion in county court of law, number one. We have one promotion in district clerk's office, one new hired in U N A probation, one new hired in the sheriff's office, this detention officer one. We have seven promotions in the sheriff's office. We are taking six detention officer ones to become detention officers twos. So we are going to increase the vacancy in D O one due to the promotion.
Perfect, good, thank you, that is presented for record, recording purposes only.
One thing, Judge?
Yes.
Um, I, I want to congratulate, uh, Mr. Dean, Larry Dean, for getting promoted to lieutenant. He and I went to police academy together.
Oh, great.
Yeah.
Good, good, good.
Congratulations, sir.
Perfect, next, let's go to item eight B, approval of order maker re- reporting to elected officials. This is not reporting Commissioners Court, that is outside of the policy, Gustavo, would you like to speak to that?
Judge, Commissioners, the court had requested from us to provide you with information whenever the elected official gets outside county policy for the hiring of employees. And, uh, on this particular case, the sheriff is requesting that the person that is going to replace Chief Dockery as, uh, gets the same salary that Chief Dockery was making at the time of his departure.
Okay, Sheriff, did you want to speak to this?
It, uh-
You're here.
Court, yes, uh, it's zero budget impact. It's, uh, just, uh, the guy, Chief Dockery's retired and then effective May third. Uh, Roger White will be, uh, assuming that position. Roger is a tenured law enforcement veteran of well over thirty years with, uh, a lot of experience, and I've just, I would just like him to make the same salaries as his predecessor.
Do we have a, do we have any questions or discussion of a motion by Commissioner Williams?
Yes, ma'am.
I second the motion.
We have a motion and a second, any other discussion?
Yeah, I do, I do want to say one thing, uh, this is nothing against, uh, Chief Deputy Dockery, but I've only heard really good things, uh, in the morale improvement. It sounds like it's already headed the right direction for having, uh, Mr. White there. So, uh, that's one of the other reasons I have no problem approving, making sure that this gentleman gets what he deserves. So I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yeah.
We have a motion and a second, any other comments? All in favor say aye. Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next, we go to eight C, approval of order making appointments, reporting to elected officials, not reporting Commissioners Court, that is outside the county policy. Gustavo?
Judge, Commissioners, this is pretty much the same situation. Uh, the difference is that the sheriff wants to pay the same salary to the lowest captain currently in place.
Judge, this is the replacement for Roger White, as he was a captain, uh, and Curtis Stevenson will be assuming that position. All I'm asking for here is that, uh, as a new captain, that he make the same as our lowest paid captain. It's still a less in the budget from what Roger was making as a captain, but that, that keeps our, uh, salaries from continually to, uh, the gap. It keeps the gap the same, and I'm just asking that, uh, he make the same as our current lowest paid captain.
Perfect, thank you, sir. Is there any other comments? Commissioner Edmondson?
No, I just-
Do you have a motion for approval?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Williams, any discussion?
Yeah, the only thing is, it's, it's not, I'm not worried about the gap as much, because that, we have that awesome, that issue everywhere. Uh, but, uh, I think that it's very reasonable to ask for him to at least be the lowest paid.
It just keeps from getting worse.
Uh, I, I understand totally, and, uh, no, I appreciate it. So, I second.
Thank you, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Sheriff, for being here.
Appreciate your time. Gustavo, thank you for you and your staff for doing exactly what we asked you to do.
Thank you. Next, let's go to item ten A, approval of the request to hold a public hearing on May the twentieth, twenty twenty-five at nine A M. for the replat of Sunrise Vista additions. This is Lot Six, R one, R, and Six, R two, R. This is five point three, one, one acres located in Commissioner Precinct Four. Do we have a motion for a public, to have a public hearing? All right, we will say that, we have a motion by Commissioner Edmondson, second by Commissioner Williams, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously, thank you. Let's go to item twelve A, approval of the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six Law Enforcement Agency Application for participation by the Denton County Sheriff's Office and the Department of Defense, the D O D Law Enforcement Support Office.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Edmondson, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. Let's proceed to item thirteen A, approval of completion of continuing education hours for Commissioner Diane Edmondson for the calendar year twenty twenty-four as requested, uh, as required by section eighty-one, point zero, zero, two, five of the Texas Local Government Code. The chair will move for approval.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Williams, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. Thank you for doing those classes. Let's proceed forward to, uh, there will be no executive session today. I was going to let y'all know, there will be no executive session today. Let's proceed forward to item seventeen, which is community updates. Commissioner Williams, any community updates?
Oh, I'm sorry, I couldn't send agenda.
Oh.
Two A.
Okay, we'll go back to that. Okay, thank you. Proceed.
Nothing for me for seventeen, sir.
And no report?
No, sir.
Commissioner Edmondson?
Judge, uh, I've got both some from, uh, the part of Flower Mound that Commissioner Mitchell represents as well as mine, and I'd like to read a few of those, if you don't mind.
Please.
Okay, well, let's start with Bobby's, because she normally would be doing that before I. Uh, and the first thing I want to mention is for everybody, early voting in municipal and school board elections has started. And it, during early voting, you can vote anywhere in the county, so please go and vote. These are important, uh, this is the farm team that is being built for future higher office. So please do your research and, and go and vote. Um, and then for our roundup of events, um, in Corinth, there's two things going on the same day. The first, and it's April twenty-sixth, from ten thirty to eleven thirty, they're going to have a sensory-friendly touch-a-truck. This is going to be especially for children, uh, who have sensory needs. And then after that, uh, from twelve to four, they're going to have other, uh, touch-a-truck for other children so that participants can explore, climb and learn all about the vehicles used by police, firefighters and first responders. We've done this in the past, it's been very successful, and I'm delighted to see that it's happening again. Now, Precinct Four, we've got in Denton, a bird watching basics. Uh, April twenty-sixth, ten thirty to eleven thirty. If you want to learn about watching birds and knowing what you're watching and what they're saying, please go to this. In Flower Mound, uh, Lakeside Music Series begins on April twenty-fifth, seven thirty to nine thirty. And, uh, then there's also something called the Kid Fish on April twenty-sixth. In Justin, they're going to have the Justin Fun Day, which sounds like it will be a lot of fun. A family-friendly day, including a rodeo, face painting, food trucks, kid zones and more. So we have a lot going on, both in Commissioner Precinct Three and Commissioner Precinct Four, Judge.
Perfect, thank you.